Good evening. Let's call the regular meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission Tuesday, February 6th to order if you would all rise and welcome with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Happy New Year to my fellow commissioners and to staff and to the vast audience we have before us. Could we go ahead and have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Carter?
Present.
Chair Friend?
Here.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Here.
Commissioner Lepper?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Fantastic. Everyone is present. Item three, closed session. I don't believe we have any closed session report. Item four, adoption of agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
I will move to adopt the agenda.
Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Q? Consent calendar. No one removed anything from consent. We have the minutes on consent. Can we get approval of the consent calendar unless somebody wishes to pull the minutes?
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved. Thank you. Item six, not applicable. Item seven. Item seven, items of interest to the public, public comment, non-agenda items. Anyone in the audience wish to address the commission on items within our purview that are not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item eight, written communications. Do we have any written communications for non-agenda items?
We have none.
We have none. Item nine, presentations and educational workshop sessions. We have none. Great. That moves us straight ahead to the business of the day. Item 10.1, special temporary use permit, 23-13, Placerville Public House on sidewalk dining. And Ms. Hunter, I believe you have the staff report.
I do. Per city code, planning commission approval is required for any sidewalk dining application involving more than two tables, more than four chairs, or in the event alcohol would be served. The applicant is requesting a TUP to permit sidewalk dining within the city's Main Street right-of-way to serve as an extension of Placerville Public House. This request includes six stools, a 42-inch tall L-shaped table, landscape planters and barrels to delineate the seating area from the sidewalk, LED Edison-style string lights on the underside of the awning to light the dining area, and the serving of food and alcohol. For a brief overview, sidewalk dining for Placerville Public House was first approved by the Development Services Department under TUP 23-01 on June 5th, 2023, and included four chairs and a 42-inch tall L-shaped table. Following this approval, staff became aware that alcohol was being served to the sidewalk dining area in violation of the conditions of approval. Staff met with the property owner in August of 2023 to discuss requirements for planning commission approval and abatement of the violation. Following this meeting, Public House began using two 7-and-a-half-foot-tall umbrellas on the outside of the L-shaped table and two additional seats. Following the issuance of a notice of violation to the project applicant, the subject TUP was submitted on October 30th, 2023. Due to the holidays and scheduling requirements, the project could not be scheduled for public hearing until tonight. As submitted and included in attachment two of the staff report, TUP 23-13 included two 7-and-a-half-foot-tall umbrellas. However, the height of the umbrellas does not comply with the requirements of the Sidewalk Dining Development Standard D, which requires the vertical clearance from the pedestrian surface of any overhead obstruction to be eight feet. At their highest point, the umbrellas are seven-and-a-half feet. Additionally, the location of the umbrellas is within the identified five-foot pedestrian pathway, the distance from the edge of the table to the back of the curb. Given the height and location, the umbrellas cannot be considered for approval. It should also be noted that staff has received one complaint associated with the outdoor dining area specifically regarding the location of the umbrellas and possible tripping hazard during downtown events where the sidewalks are crowded with pedestrians. The proposed LED Edison-style light complies with the Sidewalk Dining Development Standard C, as the lighting is decorative and complementary to the building and will provide illumination to the seating area. Overall, the request, as designed and as conditioned to include all development and operation standards, meets the stated intent of the Sidewalk Dining regulations and will enhance and enliven the Main Street pedestrian environment. Of note, during visits to the project site, staff noted that the barrels on either side of the L-shaped table on occasion encroach into the required five-foot clearance. As such, staff recommend that the barrels be moved such that they are outside of the path or are removed. In addition, staff has included condition of approval number two, requiring the applicant to submit a revised site plan showing all landscaping. Currently, the submitted site plan only includes the landscaping in the direct vicinity of the sidewalk dining area. Staff has determined that the request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA Section 15311, accessory structure, in that the project consists of the placement of minor structures accessory to an existing commercial facility, including chairs, table, and landscape planters and barrels. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of TUP 23-13, and conditionally approve TUP 23-13 located at 301-305 Main Street based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report. This concludes staff's report on item 10.1.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. As always, a very well-developed staff report. Questions of staff by commissioners? Commissioner Carter?
I just wanted to make sure that I noticed in the conditions of approval, recommended conditions of approval, attachment one, we did have wording in there regarding the umbrella. So nothing precludes them from having umbrellas. They just have to make sure that those umbrellas meet the minimum requirements per the code, correct?
I believe it would be a revision of this approval to include umbrellas.
So I'm looking at item number four on the commissions of approval. Item D, it says portable umbrellas may be permitted provided they do not obstruct. It looks to me like under the current conditions of approval, if they do find umbrellas that are within those requirements, that they would be able to use them. Without coming back to us, is that?
And that was my understanding as well in reading the report. It would be my recommendation.
Yeah, we could allow the umbrellas if they meet those standards. So the base, the umbrella unfortunately wasn't encroaching within the five-foot distance from back of curb.
I did see that, yeah.
You know, providing for a less than five-foot clearance. But the main issue is the height. So the height provided in the staff report is seven-and-a-half feet. That is the topmost portion of the umbrella. But if you look down, it's probably a foot or so lower than that. So it's really about just over six feet in height.
Right. And then those are the ones that they had asked for. But if they do find something that meets the requirements, they could use that without having to go through extra approvals or?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
This is important. I see Commissioner Lepper has some-
I had a similar vein question to-
Yeah.
-if it could be easily clarified.
Well, go ahead because I'm going to follow up with that. Go ahead.
That was just one of my questions too about the umbrellas. If they were to want to say drill a hole in the tables that they have to put the umbrellas up, to take them out, would that be possible with the eight-feet clearance of height? Would that be? Or do they have to come back?
I don't think they have to come back. I think as long as it meets the intent of that condition of approval and what's before you, staff could approval at staff level and not have to come back to the-
That we know they're out of the walkway and meet the height level is, okay, great.
So for my own edification, we have two clearance issues. One is the vertical clearance, which is from the top of the sidewalk to the bottom of the umbrella?
That's correct.
And that has to be eight feet?
That has to be eight feet.
Eight feet. Okay, fine. But then I don't believe our code talks about the umbrella encroaching into the five feet of walking space, does it? So I mean, you could, the umbrellas could reach over into that space as long as the vertical clearance is met, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that.
Don't have to worry about that.
Really, the main issue, if I understand it correctly, is the vertical clearance.
That's right.
Okay.
We have many structures, if you walk up and down Main Street, where, you know, awning or different structures are well within the five-foot of the sidewalk.
Yeah, okay. All right, great. Just so we're clear on that. Commissioner Keeney? Go ahead.
There's the vertical clearance, which I think we all understand now. But there's also the encroachment into the free passage on the sidewalk. So the-
And that's exactly what I'm talking about.
As long as it's attached to the existing, and it doesn't need a base that comes in, encroaches further into the sidewalk area. That was, we need to think about that as well. Okay.
Sorry to beat this. Just so I'm clear, when you're talking about the, nothing except for the umbrella itself might be encroaching into the five-feet walk space, right?
It's the support, the base, the umbrellas.
That should not be encroaching into the five feet at all. And I had no indication from what was presented that that would be the case because that would be at the center, assuming you got like four feet or whatever. So, all right, well, we'll talk about that and we'll make sure it's clear in the conditions of approval. Any other questions of staff by commissioners?
I have a-
Yes, go ahead. Commissioner Keeney, please?
First, for the record, before I forget, I want to state that I'm a patron of this, of the Public House. And I also want to state that I spoke, actually, I emailed staff, Mr. Rivas, about the encroachment issue shortly after, I think, the installation. My email was in sometime in June, and I think we had a follow-up conversation after my email. And so I think at that point, I expressed my concern about encroaching into the sidewalk area. And then I also want to state that subsequently, later in the summer, my spouse also sent an email to city staff about the encroachment issue. So I just want to make sure that I stated that for the record. Regardless of that, I feel that I can make a fair and unbiased determination for this proposed project. My question actually for staff is an attachment four. Who was the photographer? Is that, is this attachment, is this photos taken by the applicant or is this by the staff?
Apologies, that's photos taken by staff.
By staff. Okay, thank you. And I think those are the only, that's the only question I had about the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keeney. And I will also make a similar disclosure in that I am also a patron of the Public House. But not only that, I am generally positively predisposed to those establishments that cater to the drinking public. Okay. And so not all commissioners, past or present, have been such, but I am. So however, at the same time, I think I can render a fair judgment. I am looking in the staff report at the attachment. This is the application provided by the applicant. There's no, there's no page number, but if I do it, I have the cover page, two, three, four. This would be the fifth page into the applicant's application. And it shows a very clear five-feet of clearance between the edge of the curb, back to where the seating area is. And while it does not delineate specifically the umbrella bases, there is nothing in what the applicant is proposing that intrudes into this five feet. So I think we need to take this as the application is submitted, that nothing that the applicant is going to be providing intrudes into the five feet. So that would have to be a condition, right? All right. So it's not necessarily a question of staff, it's just an observation from the application that's filed. Okay. Commissioner Keeney?
One more. I'm sorry, I just was reminded of it as we were looking at the application package and the site plans. This request for seating is completely in the public right of, or the, on the public sidewalk, as the property line ends with the building. We had an application from Bennet where their seating is actually in, on their property, and then the sidewalk is outside of that. So this is a different situation. Am I right? The property line ends at the edge of the building?
That was, that was kind of my understanding. And I thought what was significant about this request is that any business that has the opportu, any business that has the opportunity to provide outdoor seating into the public space where there can still be maintained a minimum of five feet would be able to come to the commission and request the ability to put seating. And it may not necessarily-
You're correct in that. My question though was, I just am curious as to where the property line is in this example as opposed to, compared to the one that Bennet provided to us. But we may not have that information before us.
That'd be a question for the-
And as you pointed out, the, what's critical is maintaining free passage on the sidewalk.
Correct. And Bennet, I think, because of the way they have that like little alcove, so their property line extended, you know, in a flat line forward, they were able to use the space-
Exactly.
-inside, right? And this is different.
That's what, it's not clear-
I think it's significant, right?
In our application where the property line is, but just for the record.
Chair, is there something that staff can do to assist with these questions? There's a site plan, a very well-drawn and detailed site plan. It just has the title "Site Plan" on it. I don't see a page number on it. But it's, just sits in front of the hand-drawn drawing that shows the sidewalk dining area.
Yeah.
But it's very, very detailed. So if you look at that, there's a concrete curb that's identified on there. I think everything past that concrete curb is public right-of-way. So, you know, the seating and a good portion of the outdoor dining area is within the public right-of-way. So even though Pizza Bennet is not a subject to this, I'll just speak a little bit to it since it seems to be some connection. Basically, if you think of Pizza Bennet, it's got sort of an alcove, and that alcove is within Pizza Bennet's property. And so there's only a small portion of the fenced area that is within the city right-of-way from what I recall.
Yeah, that was my understanding as well.
And then one last-
Whereas the alcove here, Pierre, just to use that term, the alcove here is where the entrance doors are.
That's right. But it's my understanding that that concrete curb was, was actually the property line. But I would leave that to the applicant since unfortunately, there's not a clear indication of exactly where that property line is. It could be right at face of building, or it could be just in front of the concrete curb that's shown in that drawing. Either way, as long as they meet the five feet, I think they're fine. Where this goes from here is they have to obtain an encroachment permit. So the city's not going to allow any encroachment within those imaginary lines, the five-foot or the eight-foot heights, to get an encroachment permit.
So in addition to what they're doing this evening, they also have to have an encroachment permit?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And I think that's significant. Okay. Any other questions of staff? All right. This time I'll open a matter up to a public hearing, invite an applicant or their representative to perhaps come and address the commission because we might have a few questions. Is there anyone in the audience who represents this project?
So I, this is on, right? So I just came down to watch, and I guess Al can't be down here. So, but I approve what you've got on the plans. It's fine with us. And I think you've covered all the bases. And whether, I'm pretty sure the sidewalk's our property. We built that sidewalk. And, but it's basically probably a city right-of-way, you know, to do for the public. But I don't think that matters because you have to just keep five feet on that right-of-way. So, thank you. All right. If you have questions, it'd be-
That's all right. Because, so you're not here representing the project. So, okay. Appreciate your comment then on this. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the commission on this project? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action. I'll just reiterate, just for consistency, that it's always disappointing to me when the applicant doesn't show up for their project in case there are questions by the commission on the project. So that's disappointing. All right. I'll turn it over to my fellow commissioners then for questions and discussion and possible action. I'll start off, I will say that a condition I'm going to request, and I had a conversation with staff on this today, is to make sure that the applicant can provide to the city verification that their license from Alcohol Board of Control ABC allows them to serve in this area. Because a licensed premises, when you get your ABC license, is very specific. And it has to be delineated. And when they set up their business originally and did not have this outdoor seating, their license premises would have been restricted to the bar and to the dining room. So we need to know that their license premises also includes this area they're proposing. And if not, then approval must be withheld because that's a condition. They have to meet all state licensing. So we simply have to be able to verify that they have a license to serve alcohol in this area. Okay?
So that can be done with just adding a phrase, underscoring that importance under 2E on page 3 of 3, would you?
Yeah, I mean, I would just amend condition five to say they also provide evidence of an ABC license that includes the requested, extension of the requested outdoor dining area. As long as ABC has said, yeah, you can do it there, we're good. But they, a license premises, there has to be a drawing. They, an applicant, and I've done this, so I know, an applicant has to submit a detailed drawing to ABC that says, here's where I intend to serve alcohol. So that has to-
Okay, I see that now. It's a little redundant under 2E and 5, but yeah, point well taken. Also, there is a minor typo. It says wind and malt, let's make that wine and malt beverages. And then add a phrase, including, as Commissioner Friend, including serving alcohol outdoors?
Yeah, alcoholic beverages would be the correct term.
In the proposed outdoor dining area.
Yeah. And again, I'll go back to my opening remarks. I mean, I'm generally positively predisposed to requests such as this.
My question, Chair Friend, is on number five, it says all require licensing. Would that do it, or do you want?
Well, um-
Is there a way you can add that language?
Here's my thinking. When they opened their establishment, they, they had to have an ABC license, right? And in that ABC license, it would delineate their licensed premises, where they're allowed to serve. You know, when you see no alcohol maybe, you know, beyond this point, that's because that's the boundary of a licensed premises, whether you're independent or whoever. Because this is, in my view, because this is an addition to what they were doing when they originally opened, it's unlikely to me, I could be wrong, but it's unlikely, that this was included in their licensed premises, which means they had to subsequently go back to ABC and tell them, oh, we're going to add this area in an ABC, you know, they have to provide a map, a little diagram, right? Just like we have for our site plan. And ABC would sign off on it and say, you're okay to do that.
I recognize what you're saying and concur. I'm just asking for the kind of language you'd insert in number five, or do you want it separate?
No, no. I would just add to number five, provide evidence of ABC license approval that includes the additional premises or something similar to that.
Yeah, Chair Friend, if staff could help.
Yeah.
Basically, what, what condition of approval number five is saying, that they're going to seek whatever licensing is required. So I think where the commission is going is that there's evidence provided to the city to that effect. So I would just recommend at the very end, just adding the sentence, applicant to provide ABC license authorizing serving of alcohol within the outdoor seating area.
That's perfect. That's exactly it. Yeah. And I'm not suggesting that they haven't done that, but it would have been, it would have been a change. So, okay. Other, other questions or comments by commissioners? Commissioner Keeney?
My concern about the project is getting back to the encroachment and also a little bit about the aesthetics of the design. You know, we all recognize that the five-feet of clearance has to be maintained, and I think that's been made very clear. I, well, let's just go through the photographs. You know, we have the benefit of actually seeing the installation as opposed to seeing a paper two-dimensional diagram. So, you know, we've had the, the benefit to see what this is going to look like. And for the most part, you know, I think it is a, provides nice outdoor seating for the community. But if we take a look at the pictures provided both by the applicant and then by staff, we see that they were, they've used at least five chairs rather than the four that were approved under the original temporary use permit. And so there's five shown in most of the pictures that we have before us. And that already, you know, looks a little crowded, if you will. And then, so I looked in page, I'll just hold this up for the rest of you to look at what I'm looking at in the applicant's package, some black and white. So there's a picture, you know, behind the serving area. But then in the first page of attachment four, to me, it looks like there is at least one chair that's on the other side of the table. And that struck me because, you know, practically, in the operation, in the way patrons want to use this space, or they're going to, they felt a little crowded. They felt the need to put that chair on the other side of the table. And I kind of understand that. I haven't used this space myself, so I don't really know how constrained it feels. But then I look at the arrangement of the four chairs, and then I look at the diagram where they want six chairs, and they're all side by side. And to me, that just looks too crowded. And I think what we're setting ourselves up for is a violation of the temporary use permit. You know, for probably a good reason, the applicant put five chairs out. Four chairs wasn't quite enough. They felt like they needed to provide a fifth because they had that demand. But when I look at six, that seems crowded. And I think people are going to have the tendency to put a chair outside on the other side of the table because they feel confined. So I am reluctant to approve all six chairs. I think it would be better if we limited it to five chairs. That seems to be, you know, what was working for them. You know, when I look at the five chairs on the inside of the table, if you will, it seems to be enough space. People, you know, can enjoy being out there. I think six is too many. Then another thing about their design, you know, I really like the rectilinear black planters. Again, if you look at this, page one of attachment four, they have some grasses in them. That's repeated underneath the table. I think those are the same planters. And so you've got kind of that style going. In addition to encroaching into the space, the barrel planters really don't harmonize with the rest of the look of the building, which is beautiful. And if you look at the, the background of these photos where we see the building with the rectangular features, you know, the windows and the detail and everything, it's, it's beautiful. It's dark. It's a regular pattern. The barrels just don't go with the design. So I would like the commission to consider language where we say, you know, that they use something besides that barrel shape, that they go for something that's a tall, a tall rectangle. And I understand what they're trying to do with the barrels. They're, you know, defining, further defining this space where we're going to have food and alcohol. And I like that. that. I, the staff report talks about other instances where there's a swag rope, and then the food and alcohol is behind that. We don't have that luxury here. There's very minimal space behind the table for serving and, and sitting, and then we have to maintain that five feet of space. So I would like to propose that, in, in our conditions of approval, that they come back with their, their final design that has a, a planter that's more harmonious with the rest of the design. Yeah, I think, oh, we've already been, my other concern, my notes are about the umbrellas, you know, we definitely have covered that, so. Also, the, yeah, the installation, I noticed that, you know, it, it can only be 10 feet in length because there is an access door adjacent that goes to the upstairs of the building, so they really can't go beyond that, but the other barrel that is on the east side, again, that kind of helps define and set off that table space. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Carter?
I guess I would note that it's difficult to tell about the spacing from the photographs. If you look at the top one, the chairs show a lot more space than the one on the bottom. The, and I'll just hold it up for, for ease. So up here, when you look at the top one, they don't look so crowded as they do in the lower one. Then if you, you already have five, so you're talking about one more, and the one more would be towards the entrance with the first barrel, this spot right here. So I'm not sure that that's there. Most establishments, when there are ABC laws that are very strict, the staff will make sure they police it, because they lose their license, they get serious fines. So I think that's the protection that we have about the public interest being monitored, is the staff has to do it, or they lose their license or get fined. But I, I just don't want to be too restrictive for a business on design. I thought along the lines of what you said, what if you cut the barrel straight down the middle, but that's kind of tough, I haven't seen it done very often.
I think that would look...
To make it more narrow, but it, it is consistent with the idea that you're, have established the poorhouse to serve alcohol, and it's consistent with beer and wine.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Yeah, so Commissioner Carter, you're, you're back.
Yeah, I am, thank you, I'm sorry. I will agree with Commissioner Smith, I'm, I am predisposed to give a business owner the opportunity to have, I mean, the market will correct itself, if the customers don't like six chairs, then they won't sit in them, and then they won't, they'll, I mean, the business owner would then remove it, because you get negative feedback from the customers. I'm, I'm just predisposed to give the, the business owner more options than less, and so I would support their, their request to have six chairs, and if their customers don't like it, then they'll just, by, by nature, remove it.
Thank you.
Well, I suppose if, if the placement of chairs, if it, six is too crowded, like we see this example, just a, a casual photo where the one chair is on, in the right-of-way, if it's routinely violated, this is a TUP, and it's going to come up for review, so if that, if those chairs, if patrons feel too crowded, and they tend to put a chair on the outside of the serving area, then we would have to review and perhaps reduce the number of seats, or it gives us the opportunity to correct that? Is that, is that right?
So you're right, staff will monitor this, and, and just for disclosure, I'm a, I frequent the public house, not the outdoor dining, but the interior of the public house, it's a great place.
We'll do repeated site visits, you and I, we'll, we'll do site visits.
Yes. I was well aware of that chair being moved to the outside, and so because we knew this application was coming forward, what, I didn't take any additional action, but typically what staff would do is we would take a picture, we would give a courtesy notice, or we would just notify them that they can't do it. Not only is it a violation of the temporary use permit, it's a violation of the ABC license. So I think it would behoove the owner of the establishment to enforce that rule themselves, so as not to lose their license to sell alcohol within this outdoor dining area.
And the, the cycle for approval of the TUP is annually, is that right?
It's annually.
Okay, so that gives us, gives the city ample opportunity to observe if a notice of violation or more than one is, is filed, then we'll have that evidence before us when we consider, and is that a commission approval, or would that just be a staff level?
It can be a staff level.
If there, if there's no problem, then it would just be staff level.
If there's no problem. So basically, the way this ordinance was fashioned was to allow the ability to come before the commission for revocation of the permit if we find that there's constant violations of the conditions of approval.
So for, for the chair, this reemphasizes a couple of points. First, applicants showing up when they have an application before the commission, because I think there are questions and issues that come up that we really need the applicant to deal with, and again, it's unfortunate they're not here. It also, in this particular instance, reemphasizes the importance of knowing what the approved ABC license premises diagram is, because you're absolutely right, Pierre, if, if a chair or anything is, is outside that, that permitted boundary, even if that individual didn't necessarily have alcohol, the ABC would presume that they could and might, and so that, that's an issue. I do support the position of my fellow commissioners, Carter and Smith, that I am certainly disposed to allowing the market to decide if six chairs is too many, you know, basically, no, dear, I don't want to sit here, there's too many, there's too crowded, let's sit inside or whatever. I, I really think that's, that's how it should happen. Then with regards to the umbrellas, I, I'm going to insist that the code of eight feet be met, that that's what the requirement is, and I don't care how they have to adjust, they can do a sleeve insert in the base or whatever, and then those bases cannot be within that five feet of right-of-way, so they're going to have to figure that out as well. So those would be conditions that, that I would, I would want. Otherwise, I think this is a great idea, it's a great use of the space, I fully support the business being able to do this, and I'm sure I'll take advantage of it myself, so. With that, Commissioner Smith?
One question, and it is... Mr. Ross, you described the kinds of deviations, that, you know, minor deviations, and that you'd work with people, if you found some violation, you'd put them on notice and give them some warning, but I look at number one, paragraph three, and it's deviations without the above described constitutes a violation of the permit. So do you mind the word major deviations? Is that what you're talking about?
Where are you reading from?
Attachment one, I believe, yeah.
Recommended conditions, it's the first one, and it's the third paragraph, last line, deviations without the above, and all of what you described before were major deviations.
So basically, what this states is, any deviations from the project description, conditions, or site plan exhibits shall be reviewed and approved by the city for conformity with this approval. Deviations may require approved changes to the permit. Deviations without the above-described approval will constitute a violation of the permit approval. So yes, if they're very minor, and we feel they're well within the parameters of the, of the permit, we'll go ahead and approve it. If it's major, that would mean coming back to you, say, for example, if they did a redo of the, of the outdoor furniture, or the chairs, that kind of thing, because that's, that's mainly a lot with, of what's, what is within your purview is just the construction. Now, mind you, staff has to defend the chairs and the tables and the furniture, because that's what, we originally approved it as it is. It was the sale of alcohol and the additional seating that triggered it to come before you, but staff felt that the, the furniture met perfectly well the requirements of what we were seeking, because we didn't want to have people putting out plastic chairs and that kind of thing that would have more of a tacky look. Staff felt that this was very compatible with, with the Main Street building and the scene there.
This is the last question that's related to what you said earlier. Does the staff let applicants know that we encourage them to, to come here for the hearings? Or do they just assume that they did such a great job, they're not going to be needing, needed here?
No, when the notice of public hearing is sent out, the applicants receive a copy, and I inform them when the meeting will be held, and we ask them to attend. It's not mandatory, but we highly recommend they attend to answer questions.
Will they get asked?
If staff cannot.
Thank you.
And then when the staff report and agenda go out, I reiterate the same.
Thank you.
So if staff could just make one additional, addition to those statements. Basically, we attempt to work with the applicant, when are you available? We're not going to schedule a hearing before the planning commission if they say they're not available, and we'll schedule it for a different date. Typically, we're under permit streamlining act, a lot of our permits under state law requirements, we have to bring it to hearing within a certain time, so we try and meet that. But if an applicant is on vacation or something, we can certainly change the date of the hearing so that they can attend. But there is no requirement that they attend, there's nothing preventing the planning commission from rendering a decision on application without the applicant.
It's their risk if they choose not to attend. I, I forgot one thing, Commissioner Smith, you reminded me. I, I support the barrels, I, I like the barrels, I think the barrels thematically are absolutely consistent with a public house and with an establishment, you know, there's a, there's a serving beer and wine, they, they work perfectly for me, so, yeah, I, I wouldn't want to compel them to change that, so.
I think they're kind of a little bit of a barrier, too, for walking public, so that you would actually, if you're, you know, not looking, you would hit the barrel before you hit the table, which I think is good.
Yeah, it's not bad.
That was what struck me about them.
Right.
And I think if they really found themselves being crunched with the six chairs, which I have sat out there before, and it's lovely, and, and so if the six chairs comes up, I think they could always eliminate this barrel by the entrance, have that little end be a little something that keeps them within it, but not having it impinged on by the barrel, but I think it's fine as is, especially for a preliminary approval, and if issues come up, then issues would come up, but I think as proposed, it's acceptable, and, and a great addition, honestly, I think it's nice to have outdoor seating and in, in variety of places, and I think it fits well, meets all of the conditions, and hopefully they can figure out some kind of umbrella situation, if that's important to them, that obviously we are very clear, it's out of the walkway and above eight feet.
Very good. Commissioner Lepper, thank you so much. Commissioner Kinney?
Yes, I, well, you know, I absolutely disagree with the barrels, I, as I stated before, I don't think that they are harmonious, however, their purpose to separate the tables from the walkway, there needs to be something there that does not encroach into the walkway, and I think this is an opportunity for the applicant to get something that really, I said, sets off the facade of the building. I, I think, you know, the barrels of, of that certain style, yeah, they go with the vintage look that we have, but what I see as far as the table and chairs is more of a, you know, a coordinating, more modern look, and I think that since they have to do something that doesn't encroach into the five-foot space, they need to replace that or modify them, this is an opportunity for them to do something, I think, like I said, just a little more decorative. But something that Mr. Evas said, kind of brought up another question we hadn't covered, you know, we, we were very concerned about the serving of alcohol. Suppose the license doesn't come through. Suppose, as you pointed out, inside, the, the sign gets posted, no alcohol beyond this point, then, then what do we have? We just have a temporary, a TUP for just outdoor dining, right? And then they, that also would have to come for renewal on an annual basis, but no alcohol could be served outside.
I believe it's the number of seating also triggered review before the planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
The director's approval is limited up to four? Two tables, four chairs?
Mm-hmm.
So it was the, you know, the, the size of the outdoor dining area that also brought it before you. So if they weren't serving alcohol because they didn't get a license from ABC, it would still have their outdoor dining area, just couldn't serve the alcohol.
Or if, you know, we were talking about violations, if for some reason that gets revoked, then we can still have a, a nice dining area outside, but they just wouldn't be allowed to serve alcohol.
That's correct.
You know, and one thing, I, I don't want to let this go by before we close this discussion, we did receive in our packet a copy of an email from Ruth, Ruth Michelson, and, you know, she's in support of this, and, you know, just as you said, you know, we like the applicant to come before us and answer some of these questions we have, I also want to thank her for taking the time to send a note. It just, it, it's good for the commission to hear, to see that there, there is support, or, you know, if there is opposition. So I just wanted to go on the record to thank her for going to that effort.
Very good, all right. Is, are, do we have any commissioners that are willing to put forth a motion? Commissioner Smith, I see your hand being raised. Microphone, please, microphone? Yeah, good. Microphone, please, sir.
We move the commission that, number one, you adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the following findings in support of the special temporary use permit 2313, and request that the request is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, the guidelines that are provided by CEQA, and that it involves the placement of minor structures on the city sidewalk accessory to the existing Lasserville Public House commercial business. Two, that the project site APN 001-212-014 and 013, or 301 and 305 Main Street, contains two-story commercial building included on the city's historic resources inventory, as well as the state register of historic places, and that it is located within the downtown Lasserville. Three, that the project request as amended meets the purpose and intent of the sidewalk dining regulations, zoning ordinance section 10-4-19, by allowing a limited encroachment of outdoor dining within and into the public right-of-way, ancillary to the adjacent Lasserville Public House food and beverage establishment, where the development layout as proposed and conditions, condition does unduly restrict public access or detract from the appearance of the surrounding area. Conditionally approved, we have prominum three, that it's located at 301 and 305, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions. So we incorporate by reference the attachment list of recommendations and conditions of approval with the following modifications. Number five is for all, the application shall obtain all required on-sale licensing from the state agencies that authorizes the sale of all types of wine and malt beverages that for consumption of premises, and that that specifically includes ABC permits related to consumption of alcohol in this outside area. I think there was an additional bit of language that you added on another portion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, and Commissioner Smith, I'm not sure if this was your first motion as a commissioner or not, but it's a first motion of the new year, so thank you for that motion. I think it's duly made. Commissioner Carter, have your light on?
I was just curious if the chair was satisfied, did you, did you want to add language regarding the umbrella bases and encroachment into the right-of-way, is that something that you were like?
Yeah, good, I, I think that's a good point, because item D...
I did make a note to add something to that.
Four D covers the height, but we don't have anything, I would, if possible, you could add a condition, it'd be seven, a general condition, seven, that a full five feet shall be maintained at all times for the, the public right-of-way, or anything along those, nothing shall encroach, not the... anything along those, nothing shall encroach, not the applicant shall not have anything encroaches.
I think that would satisfy my...
Whatever. I don't want to worry about the umbrellas, because the umbrellas, the top of the umbrella could encroach, but at sidewalk level, nothing can encroach at sidewalk level into that five-feet zone, so something along those lines.
That would address your concern.
Ah, that would. Is that, so that'd be my condition seven?
Number seven would be the languages, that it's got to be a minimum of eight feet tall, and that the base does not go into the five-foot free zone of the sidewalk.
Could we just add five feet to the first sentence? In D, portable umbrellas may be permitted, provided that you do not obstruct the five-foot public right-of-way or walkway?
The issue is that the umbrella basically has two points of consideration. You have the overhead, which we really don't necessarily care if the overhead encroaches into the five feet. It's the base, nothing at sidewalk level, that's really the issue, right? Nothing at sidewalk level can encroach into that.
So could we say portable umbrellas may be permitted, provided the base does not obstruct the five-foot public right-of-way or walkway, and do not contain advertising? I think the next sentence...
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Provided the base, provided the base...
So you're modifying condition D?
D, I think with that, I think adding another one, it just can get confusing.
I agree with you.
So if we can keep it under this one? So portable umbrellas may be permitted, provided the base does not obstruct the five-foot public right-of-way or walkway, and does not contain advertising. The minimum vertical clearance from the pedestrian surface for any overhead obstruction, including umbrellas, shall be eight feet.
Okay. So just portable umbrellas may be permitted, provided the base does not encroach into the, is that what you said?
I just left obstruct the five-foot...
Does not obstruct, so the base is not obstruct the public right-of...
We could even say obstruct or encroach upon, if you...
Oh, no, no, no. I just wanted to figure out where to put the language.
Mm-hmm.
Provided, provide the base does not, does not, there it was, there was, okay. Good. Commissioner Smith, do you accept that as a friendly amendment to your motion?
And I will second.
Is that clear enough for staff? Okay, very good.
And one more, one more item. When you're discussing the licensing earlier, you had emphasized that you wanted evidence submitted, or are you okay with just the statement that they shall obtain and allow that to be, you know, under the auspices of the state agency?
You know, that's an interesting question, because I don't know that staff is in the business of monitoring whether or not businesses that serve alcohol actually have the appropriate licenses, right? That's probably handled by complaints through ABC.
So you're fine with just saying that they will get that?
I think we're putting them on notice. Again, if Al or Darcy had been here, I would have asked them directly, you know, does your ABC, you know, premises include this area, yes or no? And I, you know, they would have told us. We're left to wonders. We have to assume that it does. I'm leaving that to staff. We have to assume that it does. Depends on how comfortable staff is with that.
Yeah, Chair, if I may, typically, the communication between staff and ABC works like this. We typically get a notice from ABC that there's a pending license, and they request whether or not a permit is required from the city to allow the sale of alcohol.
Or if there's a zoning conflict. That's the other thing they ask for.
Yeah, is there a permit?
Is there a zoning conflict?
Well, they're asking if the zoning allows it and is there a permit?
The zoning permits the planned activity.
You know, basically, they'll ask if there's, you know, some cities require a conditional use permit. In this case, we require a temporary use permit. Staff did not receive notice from ABC about this additional license for drinking of alcohol.
Yeah, so the way this works, just so you know, they already had a license to serve, okay? If their original license did not reflect this area as part of the permitted premises, they would have to go back to ABC with a modified map and say, "Our permitted premises is, we want it to include this." They'd have to get ABC approval, right? But their original license would not be revoked. The city would not be notified of this. So the question, I'll leave it to staff to decide what they want to require from the applicant. Our condition says the applicant shall obtain all required on-sale licensing, and so since they're adding for an expansion, that required licensing should include this part of the premises, so there should be a revised map. And so I'll leave it to staff to decide how they want to find out if that is the case or not.
And just for clarification, the city's permit is just the sale of alcohol? The city doesn't have a concern other than, the establishment doesn't have, you know, outdoor sales versus indoor sales? It's just a permit to the business owner. Is that right?
I'm not exactly sure what exactly you're asking, but basically what triggered this temporary use permit to come before you is because it exceeded four chairs and the sale of alcohol. Anytime there's sale of alcohol, it's going to come before the planning commission. But I agree with Chair Friend that we should get the entire permit from ABC that shows a diagram of what they approved.
So then, we could just add to this condition on five. The applicant shall submit a copy of the approved ABC license that includes delineation of this area, right? Then they're just going to, I mean, they just have to provide you a copy. That's the easiest way to do it.
Okay, so we are going to then have them provide the evidence?
Yeah. I think they should, I think they should provide a copy of this, because I, I just think it's in our best interest. And I think that should be a standard moving forward. As these things pop up, you should ask for it. Okay, so we're good on that? Other discussion? All right. Go ahead and roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Fantastic. The item carries on a five to zero vote. Notice that there is a 10-day public appeal process, so, okay. That moves us on then to item 10 dot two. I have to simply find my agenda so that I can read it proper. Thank you, Commissioner Lepper, you're so kind. 10 dot two, Commissional Use Permit 24-01. This is the Prospector Entertainment Venue and Bar at, let's see, 594 Main Street. And Ms. Hunter, you have the staff report.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to authorize operation of 594 Main Street as a place of entertainment, including but not limited to live music, dancing, classes, and an arcade. Establishment of the Prospector, as proposed, would continue the use of a historic building constructed in the mid-1800s that has sat vacant for the later part of 2023. The proposed project reestablishes the building as a place of entertainment, last approved by the planning commission in 1992, under CUP 92-02. Staff included documents pertaining to the previous approval as attachment six and seven of the staff report. Staff has determined that the request as conditioned is consistent with the Central Business District Zone regulations, in that the proposed place of entertainment will be compatible with the adjacent uses, will be conducted entirely within the building, and will not negatively affect nearby sensitive use receptors, including Sierra Elementary and the neighboring residential uses. Further, as the project site is located within the downtown parking district, the applicant is not required to provide private off-street parking, as parking is available in the nearby Mooney and Ivy House lots. Overall, the proposed use is desirable to the community, providing an arcade currently not offered within city limits, as well as a live music venue and meeting place. Of note, staff has included condition of approval number eight, which requires the removal of the roof sign. This was a condition of the previous approval, which was never completed. For clarification, because we did receive a question, the condition specifically requires the removal of the sign structure, which was never permitted. Additionally, staff received questions regarding building division and fire comments, and what is required prior to occupancy. These comments can be found in attachment five of the staff report, and include the limitation of occupancy to 49 persons per floor, requirements for fire alarms, requirements for an emergency exit on the second floor, as well as requirements for an evaluation of structural capacity and for resistance to gravity loads. Occupancy will not be issued unless the building division and fire protection district are satisfied the requirements are met. Staff has determined that the request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures, in that the project includes the change in use occupancy from retail to a place of entertainment within an existing structure. No exterior modifications of the building are being proposed. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of CUP 24-01, and conditionally approve CUP 24-01 located at 594 Main Street, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report. This concludes staff's report on item 10.2.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Another excellent presentation. Questions of staff by commissioners? Commissioner Keeney?
Just for the record, I want to make sure that we're clear. In 1992, CUP was issued to the zoo, and then because the ownership or branding changed to the Cosmic Cafe, but the use was continued, that CUP ran with the land. Then the change, the use changed to retail. And so now we're, again, considering a similar CUP for, again, an arcade entertainment, food and beverage service.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carter?
I had a question regarding the decibel restrictions. Is that, are there any other indoor music venues in this city that have similar decibel restrictions? Are you familiar with the, I spent a lot of time on Main Street listening to live music, and 85 decibels is a hair dryer. It's not very loud. But I understand that it's considered, anything above that is considered to be, I'm just curious if that restriction exists on any other businesses on Main Street?
I don't know if it exists, but typically with a conditional use permit, you have broad discretion on the operation, including noise. And so staff's opinion that if it's too loud in small quarters like we have there at this venue, I used to frequent that way back when, when they had a lot of different music there. Sometimes, some of those bands were too loud, had to leave. I have ringing in my ears. So it's not personal, but basically if there, you have the ability to look at public health and safety.
It just seems, it seems difficult to enforce, for one, and I don't know, I mean, possibly a little overly restrictive of the business owner, but I'll leave it to the rest of the, I just wanted to...
I'd actually like to pick up on that point, because we don't have hours of operation described in here, and if we look at, say, oh, I didn't, oh, I know until 2:00 AM. Okay.
About 10:00 AM, I believe, to 2:00 AM.
10:00 PM is when the arcade is open to everyone until 10:00 PM. From 10:00 PM until 2:00 AM, we're restricted to 21 and over. Okay, so I got that part. I'm sorry. We don't have hours of operation for music, and if we look at, like, for example, oh, an Outbreak Brewing was here, right? And I believe we had restricted their, the music there until like 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM. And so if we have a decibel restriction, then they can play music until last call, right? Because you can't hear anything outside. You know, they've got it set up, so it's not bothering. If we, if we don't, then I think we have to have a conversation about how late they can play music, right? Particularly in the canyon, in fact, we have, as it's mentioned in the staff report, residential to the immediate south, but right across the way is also residential on Clay Street and around. And I was talking with some folks just before I came here who live up in the Clay Street area, and while they're very supportive of something like this coming in, they also are concerned about noise, right? So I think, I don't, I don't really care necessarily what's happening inside the venue. I think what's happening outside the venue in hours of operation is something we should probably have some conversation about with input and suggestions from staff. So just on that point, so. Particularly Friday and Saturday night, I think lively is good. I think it's good for business. I think it's good for downtown, et cetera. Helps bring a sense of vibrancy, and this, this, along with what Public House is doing and what, when we finally get the distillery up, you know, the old Outbreak Building, I think it's starting to add life, you know, this part of Main moving even into Broadway. So, all right, so other...
I had one more.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
So I noticed that there, in this report, it talks about the possibility of getting an easement for a pad for a fire. So, but nothing that we're doing tonight has anything to do with the exterior of the building. All we're doing tonight is just the interior. When and if that situation presents itself, I know that there's an existing fire escape on the east side of the building, so when and if that comes to pass, that'll come back before us for a separate project?
It'll be administrative.
Or would it be?
No, I don't, I don't think it would.
It'll be administrative.
But because it's a historic building listed on the register, I would...
It'd be subject to a building permit and review and approval by the fire marshal.
Okay, so nothing that we're doing tonight has any effect on the exterior of the building whatsoever, with the exception of that removal of the roof sign that we're considering?
Well, I wouldn't go that far, so if they were proposing some, let's just say, major changes to the exterior of the building, that probably, that probably would come before you.
Okay, okay.
And so, and I think what Commissioner Carter is talking about is, is the fire escape, that that's going to be a requirement, right? That they have a fire, fire escape up to code. At what point does the aesthetics or modification of the building to accommodate the fire department's requirement trigger a review at this level, or does it? It's kind of tricky, I get it, but you have to put it, you got to put in the fires...
Yeah, without actually seeing what that change is, I can only speculate.
So it'll be, so Pierre, if I understand, then it'll be up to staff to decide that the proposed fire, that the fire escape being proposed to meet the fire department is or is not of significant impact, it would have to come here? Is that how you're saying?
Our initial assessment would be no, who would not come before you.
Okay, that's good. But if it was something horrendous, then you would say, "Yeah, commission better take a look at it," right?
That's correct.
All right. Good enough.
And there is a fire escape now on that same side of the building.
Yeah, I don't think...
It should be a modification of something that's existing.
My understanding is it doesn't meet standards.
Right.
Yeah, has to be substantially revised and brought up to standard. And I think it's getting to Commissioner Carter's question.
Yes.
All right. Other questions of staff by commissioners? Commissioner Keeney, I see your light is on?
No.
Well, it is, I can see it.
Oh, no, I don't have any other questions.
Can you turn your light off? Otherwise I get confused. Well, I get confused. I think you have a question.
I'm sorry.
All right. Since there's no other questions by commissioners, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Hopefully, the agent or applicant is in the audience, possibly can address questions. If you'd be so kind to come up to the podium, you'll find us to be a friendly lot, even though we may ask you a lot of questions. Thank you for your project.
Absolutely. I'm Ken Bell. I'm the owner and retired general contractor, been working on the building mostly myself.
I need to ask a question ahead of time, because it seems that we had the owner of the building, when it changed from Cosmic Cafe, are you the same folks?
My uncle...
Been in your family forever?
My uncle is Ken Bell. My name is also Ken Bell.
Yeah.
He's the owner of the building still currently. It is in a trust to stay in the family.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, all right. Well, I don't know if the building had been sold.
Got you.
Okay, so I'll start with questions, unless you want to present, if you have a presentation...
I don't have a presentation ready, but I might be able to help answer some of the concerns I've heard so far.
Super.
The pad that we are looking to put outside the rear door, we have run egress numbers and think everything will work. We need a very small variance of probably five feet, which I don't think the fire marshal's going to have an issue with. going to have an issue with. We are trying to adapt to everything as far as we can and push as hard as we can in the spirit of safety, which was his key words, and I agree. I'd hate for a fireman to get hurt in my building. So we're looking to accommodate everybody and safety along the way. So the pad was something I think is absolutely necessary. The pad would have a simple staircase going down right uptight to my building into the flower bed in the back of the parking lot. At that point, we probably would remove the existing staircase off of the building just because there'd be no purpose for it at that point. It'd kind of be an eyesore. The signage on the roof has been removed already. I took care of that. So we're making steps to become compliant with everyone's requests along the way.
Great. Thank you. We'll start with questions, and I think the conversation will kind of go from there.
Okay.
I'll start with a couple of questions. What about the caves?
Cave. The cave is still closed. I believe it was initially closed down from the ripple in the flooring. Has some Trex flooring that warped and caused a ripple. There's been some pretty extensive damage due to condensation in the shaft. We had a, an actual friend of mine from high school did a geological survey and found there to be a fault line going through the shaft. And we've had some separation in its own where moisture's coming down from my property that's being used by the miners' cabins up above me. They keep cutting in a garden, and then all their moisture ends up into my mine shafts, creating problems. So we're addressing issues up there with that property owner.
Interesting.
And to get it sloped to try to create the drainage that we need, I've actually found a shaft that goes from the mine shaft up into the bar and exposed it. I put a high-powered inline duct vent, and we're going to be ducting that out the rear door during business hours to try to help with some of the condensation issues. That will in turn, long story longer, give us the ability to open the shaft up again. I think, I think we could appease most of the issues once I get all the electrical rewired, brought up to date, everything's watertight and safe again, and deal with the flooring issue in there. And then we'd obviously probably invite you guys to come take a look and see where things go from there.
Great. It's a very, very interesting building.
It is.
Are you taking out the kitchen?
The kitchen's been gone since.
Been gone for a while.
2019, 2019, I took it out myself, yes.
Okay, I haven't been in there for a while.
Okay. The bottom floor is very clean, very, I wouldn't say remodeled, right? The beams, we just painted them a cedar brown color, tried to make them look clean again. The walls are white, everything's super clean, indoor/outdoor carpeting. I put in wiring and I put in a new power panel, had it all inspected through the city. And that's basically all the wiring that we're using now for the arcade, all the video games downstairs. And upstairs, the bar's been completely cleaned.
You didn't, you didn't address it specifically in your application, but the Soto Works sign, as well as the Pearson, very top, those are remaining, correct?
Absolutely. I'm not, I'm not doing anything to the exterior at all. I understand that there's a pretty good fee that could probably be put up on me if I did, which I wouldn't look to. I'm trying to preserve the building.
We may or may not want to include as a condition that those, those signs remain visible and maintained. And then I guess the other question, talking about the sound levels and music and all that sort of thing, and what your thoughts are, what you envision for what's going to happen there?
So from, when I read the documentation also, from the testing that had been done, was the music was at 100 decibels on the interior side. On the exterior of the building, it was unnoticedable. So we were at zero level. The, when we opened the front windows, then the music started to come out. So the condition was when we were having music upstairs, that we would keep those front windows closed. That would keep the exterior of the building at a zero decibel reading.
Okay. All right. Other questions by commissioners? Thank you very much.
I'd like to follow up on the, the noise issue because that's been something ongoing. In 92, they talked about it, and, you know, obviously we're very concerned about it. This is a little different situation than downtown, the other part of our central business district, in that you have residences nearby. So we do need to be more sensitive to this noise issue.
Absolutely.
So one question I wanted to ask is if you're going to be installing any HVAC in the building?
It has HVAC.
It does. Okay. In my experience, I went to numerous shows in the Cosmic upstairs, got really hot when there was music. And so in the staff report, it's not just the, the windows in the front, which, you know, that, when there's a loud band, you could hear the band over by the bike trail. But the staff report talks about the windows on the east side and keeping those closed. Now, when I kind of toured around the property recently, I saw that there, there was a metal closure over there, but as I remember it, you know, those are, those are standard windows. And so that, that, that would be open, and I believe, isn't that the east side? You're not talking about the front, or you?
Correct. So that would be the east side.
The east side. So how can you assure us that on a hot summer night with a loud band, you can keep those windows closed?
Run the AC.
So you, you have AC, and so you can keep it comfortable up there and keep those closed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We have, we have a couple of fans upstairs, and we've had our HVAC system gone through, and we're even looking to replace it shortly after we get the business opened up for economical reasons. You know, this is an older unit. It does work. It's a, and we, I installed an industrial heater downstairs. A lot of times we had people come in the building and think that we had an air conditioner on in the summertime. You know, why do you have this front door open and the AC on? And it's just the thickness of those walls really keeps the cool air.
And the mine shaft, too.
The mine shaft, that whole.
Yeah, downstairs is quite comfortable. It's the upstairs where you're going to have the, the music that, you know, in my experience, yeah, it could get pretty warm up there.
Yeah, yeah. So there's actually three large ducts over the stage. They're 24 by 24, which is a pretty big volume for an 800 square foot space.
Okay.
I think that what you may have experienced in the past is the owners just being a little chintzy and not turning the AC on for their patrons.
Okay. That really takes care of my concerns about the, the noise outside the building. I have a couple of operational questions for you.
Okay.
You're going to modify an existing lift for ADA accessibility, right? So is it, is it working now, or?
No.
No, so you, it's not operational.
Correct.
And as I recall, the only restrooms are on the second floor.
Yes, ma'am.
So in your, you provided conditional use permit notes, you tell us a little bit about how you want to operate the arcade as soon as possible while you're making the alterations upstairs. So tell us about ADA accessibility to those restrooms before you, or will you have the lift taken care of before you open up the arcade?
So if, we were hoping to open the arcade the first of next month. I know that I'm, I have a good battle going on with this elevator or lift, however we want to say it. It would seem that the law and all the rules are at my back, but the state is so powerful, no one wants to work for me. So I can't get someone to come and install a lift because they're terrified of what the state's going to do to their license as a repercussion, even though I'm saying, excuse me, we have the ability to do what I'm asking to do via the, not only the city's enforcement of certain rules and laws, but that we're at the national level with that building in particular. They're wanting a 60-inch wide elevator with side access. It would destroy the building. We would create a large opening up top, get back into cutting out more beams of the floor. The railing that goes around the current elevator system matches the hand railing that goes up the stairs, matches the railing in the windows, that would be gone. We would, it would no longer fit. We'd have to dispose of it.
Is this an ADA requirement?
It is. If I'm going to operate a business on the upstairs, I have to be able to get everyone up there. And from what I understand, there's rules that say I can probably avert that, but I'm, I'm trying not to go that way. I want, I want everyone to get up there and enjoy what we're trying to put together. And I don't think you could really avert anything. You could say, okay, I don't have to do this by this law or this code, but in the end, when a handicapped person is unable to get to that access and they fill out the correct document, I'm stuck with a $4,000 bill no matter what.
Right.
Right. So have you thought of a temporary workaround until you can get that access, access issue resolved?
I'm open ears to one.
See, I don't know, and this might be a question for staff. If you open the arcade, and so that's a, you know, a public space where people are coming to engage in activity, does that require a public restroom?
No, sir.
There's no food being served, but you're saying no, and I don't disbelieve you, but kind of looking at staff, do we know?
Does not require a restroom.
Okay. So you could, you could open the first floor, you could open the arcade, and then you could continue to work on this other thorn that you've got.
That is my intent, yes.
Okay. You obviously are here for us to approve the entire thing. And if we approve the entire thing, there's nothing that compels you to utilize everything we've approved. You can just utilize part of it. So I'm, I'm okay with that. So, all right. I don't know if I interrupted somebody's question. I have another question, if I could just jump in. Do you have an alcohol license now? And if not, what type of license are you applying for?
We are applying for just the beer and.
Beer and wine?
At this time, yes.
Okay, beer, wine, seltzer.
We did put our name in the hat for.
The lottery for?
Yes, and we were number eight, so.
Okay.
It happened. But we are just going to do the beer and wine for a couple of years, and then we'll attempt to try for the alcohol license again later if it's.
Okay.
And do you plan to go ahead and open the arcade without that license while that's pending, just to?
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of get the, the public aware of your new facility and generate a little income so you can keep doing those improvements, right?
Yes, yeah, there's, there's, there's quite a bit of money invested into video games.
Okay. I, just please clarify for us if you will. So let's, let's jump back. Let's see. You, let's see, you get your beer and wine license, and you're talking about the door bouncer will move from the rear door saloon entrance to the main front door. So where's the, where's the rear door? I'm trying, I guess the interior's been greatly changed since the last time I was in there, but so you're going to have, explain how that's going to work.
Absolutely. So as you come to the front of the building, there's two sets of double doors that are our main entrances. As you proceed through the building, there's one set of double doors at the rear east wall. That goes and takes you into the stairwell, which allows you access to the upstairs. So we, our intent was to put someone there checking IDs to keep one business separate from the other. And we actually had a discussion about this last night, and I didn't know, you know, if this was just me, you know, trying to take safety to the next level or being too cautious. Just, and the reason I say that is we have the bowling alley up in Pollock Pines where I live, and it's kind of an open thing where there's children there playing video games, and right next to him is a guy, you know, drinking his beer. And the children can come in and out of the bar area, not at the bar. And I was wondering what the limitations were for something like that. Am I limited, am I?
From an ABC perspective, you simply cannot have children at the bar where the alcohol's being served. You're absolutely right. So you have a restaurant, right? And you have, you have alcohol out and about in the restaurant, right? There's no problem, same thing with the bowling alley. There's no problem with that mixture. It's at the, the children cannot be sitting at the bar. And although I've heard discussions where ABC says, yeah, even that technically, it's more of an optic than anything else, but as long as the children aren't at the bar proper, it's, it's not an issue.
Okay.
The challenge to burden becomes on the.
So if I look at your diagram, so the bar, the actual bar where you're pouring alcohol will be back in what's called the lobby? And that, that's where beer and wine will be served?
No, ma'am. No, the lobby is the stairwell on the first floor.
Right. So where's the bouncer going to be?
He would, well, that's, that was my question here. If, if it's not necessary, we may dispose of that whole idea. If you, if you think it is something necessary, we would have him in a chair beyond, you know, sitting at that doorway to say, this is the point, 21 and above beyond this point. Mostly because I think it would be easier to keep track of these patrons and these patrons if I was separating them as such, you know, underage group and, and a legal age group.
I think what you'd want to do at a minimum is if you have alcohol being served where there can be minors, is that you provide wristbands to those that are, have provided a validated ID of 21 and over. So then boom, I'm marked. It's easy to see who can have alcohol or not. Also, who can be in possession helps, because you're, you're going to be responsible for monitoring and enforcement, right?
Absolutely.
Do you want to do anything you can to make it easy for you to not come into violation of alcohol to minors? Because that, that's the big, that's the one that ABC is most concerned with, is alcohol to minors. So whatever mechanism you need to do, that's what you should do.
And the conversation came up with me and my family due to, what if we want to get a kid up here to watch this show? What if his family plays in this band?
Yep.
And I'm telling him, this is the line, and you're out, you know? And it kind of takes me from entertainment back to just a bar, I feel, you know? And we're really focused on the entertainment part of this. You know, we were trying to bring that whole thing to Placerville, where we just, I have a daughter and a granddaughter. I had a 15-year-old nephew living with me until just recently, and there was just nothing for anyone to do. You know, once we lost the billiards hall, that was kind of, we got a couple of video games at the pool pizza place, but, you know, there just wasn't a whole lot for younger children to do. And I've always loved the bar upstairs and that whole scene from back in the Cosmic days. I've been there myself, so.
And so that's, that's where you plan to serve beer and wine, is actually upstairs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It was just not clear in this narrative that you provided to us. You know, you want to open the arcade as soon as possible while you're working on the upstairs. But when you're through with that and you have your license to serve beer and wine, that's going to take, all the sales will be upstairs. There will not be any sales downstairs?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that was not clear to me in your narrative, but thank you. Now, now I understand it. It makes perfect sense, and I don't think that we will have any, you know, undue conflict with, with minors being around while you're serving beer. I just thought that you wanted to obtain that license so you could generate income, and you plan to do all of your operations on the first floor while you're working on the second floor, but that's not the case.
Yes, ma'am.
And going back to the discussion on the previous agenda item, it'll depend upon where your licensed premises is delineated.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So it gets, all gets back to that.
So my delineation right now is the entire upper floor and the stairwell is where I've marked it. Obviously, I haven't turned anything into the ABC yet because I want to make sure that the door is open for me to be able to walk through. I realize I've invested a ton of my time and money into the building already, but, you know, she needed it either way.
Okay, so as I understand your narrative now, that at 10:00 PM, no one under 21 is allowed in the building?
That's part of the city ordinance as far as minors after 10 o'clock. We have that. Is that still in, something that's in force?
I, I don't know that that's.
Growing up, that's always the way it was for me. I guess I just took.
You know, how you, how you want to operate the business, that's, that, as long as you're within the rules of the ABC and your permit, that's what's important.
Yes.
And, yeah. Okay, I think my questions for, that's all my questions for the applicant.
Any other questions by commissioners? Commissioner Smith, Light? There you go.
First, to commend you for undertaking a very courageous project. It's one of the most important historic buildings in town.
Thank you.
And you've certainly got a lot of work to. And you've certainly got a lot of work to keep it up, to put it in good shape. When Roger Dubers had it, the elevator was working. And it's unique, it's a water-operated elevator.
Yes, sir.
And I just wondered how you can do that, make a change that way when it's on the national registry as an historic building? I don't know. That's just one question to ask you. The other has to do with, and I'll just hold this up for illustration. The second floor design shows where you have the fire escape. Does that work?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
Then in the back, you've got stairs coming down.
Those-
Get, yes?
I'm sorry, the stairs actually go from the rooftop down to the back door on the second floor. It's-
Who owns the property on the east side where there's parking?
So I own two-thirds of that stairwell. Excuse me. And One Loose Tooth, the dentist office on the corner, he owns all the rest of that property, all the way up to the miners' camps. So he owns that whole wall and the parking lot and everything. So I approached him, just to keep us all on the same page here. I approached him about, you know, I'd like to put a pad here to use as a new emergency exit. You know, I didn't like the old one either. I've stepped out on it, and it's, it takes some commitment. So-
It looks scary.
I approached him, and I asked him if I could, you know, use his property up there. And in return, I would repair the wall where we, I'm sure you've all seen the walls eroded, and it always has been. And sometimes it's been eroded all the way down to the ground, and they'll build it back up. It just keeps pushing out and pushing out. So I told him, I'll repair the wall. You know, go to the quarry and get the right stones and put the wall back and put a foundation behind it that I can basically lock behind this land and relieve all the erosion in that area. So I can get the erosion to go around and down, gutter it right down into his parking lot. And for doing so, he would allow me to use that property and put a stairway up against my building to use as a new improved emergency exit. We ran some calculations, Greg and myself down at the city office, and we should be right there. What I understood, as long as we came very, very close, the fire marshal was willing to work with me on a few feet or a couple of inches, whatever, if it wasn't too drastic, obviously. You know, if we, if I'm pushing as hard as I can to get everything as best as I can for the building's capacity, he's willing to work with me somewhat. So I think, I think everything's going to play out from all of our measurements, and everything should work out.
When you say three-quarters of a stairwell, in terms of distance, how much space is that?
Two feet. It's a three-foot stairwell, so two feet of it is my property. There's a property marker right in the second step is the property marker.
The reason I ask is because of the chairlift, which are cheaper than an elevator, and you don't have to have yearly inspections. There's one across the street in the building over there. And I'm wondering if you had on the outside of the building, you have the added advantage of providing reinforcement to the building, but it wouldn't necessitate taking out that historic structure, even though it's inoperable?
I absolutely looked into that as well and spoke to the property owner about that being a second option if my plan didn't follow through, and he's not too keen on the idea. I think he feels that if there's an elevator back there, there's gonna be somebody trying to sleep in it or, you know? And I didn't know if I was too keen on the idea of, if you came to my business with your family and one of your family members was in a wheelchair, and I say, what you gotta do is walk right back out that front door and go around the parking lot into this parking lot and-
The idea is that you'd be accessible from inside the first floor. You go in to the chairlift and then straight up and then back.
I'm sorry if I interrupted you there. I don't think that would be possible. The structure of the building is at a point to where the mortar is pretty powder. You know, the mortar holding the building together. The walls are 22-inch thick of stone and mortar, and I don't think we could modify those walls at all without losing some structural capacity of the building or even possibly being detrimental to the building at that point.
Structural safety isn't necessarily resting with us. I understand we're passing it on to others to take care of that. But have you repointed the stone so far, the gaps in the mortar?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Have you done any repointing of the stonework, brick and the stones, to repair the mortar to start to deteriorate?
I have on the back wall, on the exterior wall around the back door. It was actually, stones were starting to fall out of the wall where I took it apart, probably up to about six and a half feet by about three feet. And only one stone in. It's about two or three stones wide. So I took the one stones out, and then we basically remortared that whole wall and locked it all up again, got it all nice and tight. And to add to that, on the interior of the building, I've sealed all the rock walls. So it's a clear seal. It looks like the wall is wet. It's very attractive. You see all the work and all the stones, and it holds up mortar together also. We used to have a little bit of powder on the bar, you know, in the mornings from the expansion contraction of the building overnight, and that basically resolved the issue, so.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Carter?
Yeah. I also want to echo Commissioner Smith's sentiment about this is an awesome idea for this building, and it is obviously one of the iconic buildings in town. And so thank you for doing everything that you're doing to preserve it. I did want to ask you briefly about, as a lover of live music, I'm excited for another venue, this 85 decibel requirement. What is your, do you find that to be overly obstruction of what you're planning on doing? Or is that something that is gonna affect your ability to have live music in your establishment?
My thought was, I own the equipment upstairs. I bought all brand-new equipment. That way bands don't have to carry all their speakers and amps and everything up the stairs. My equipment's gonna be my equipment. Nobody's gonna touch it but me. So I'll set the levels at what I think is acceptable. But honestly, I couldn't tell you what 85 decibels sounds like right now versus 100 decibels. But we'll have to, we'll have to take some measurements and reel in the volume levels of the equipment.
And you obviously want to be a good neighbor. I mean, that's, you're not trying to annoy your neighbors and in-
Not at all.
The reason I'm, I just, I find it difficult to put this arbitrary limit on, you know, on you of 85 decibels. It just seems like it's kind of a, like I said, impossible to enforce and without you buying specialized equipment to measure your decibel levels.
Right.
That's for the exterior, that's outside the building.
Oh, indoor, that's indoor.
Indoor.
We're limiting his ability to have sound indoor.
I thought there was this recommendation.
And that's a carryover. So I think it will probably come up in our discussions.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just was curious of his opinion of that.
We're in the same mindset today. All your questions are the same as mine, and so I definitely want to address that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, and so thank you for asking the applicant what he-
I had a follow-up to your question about that. It's interesting. Thank you for telling us that you have your own equipment, and it'll be under your control. That's, that's great. And since you will be monitoring these things, would it be, how onerous would it be for you to, you know, create a table of maybe for six months and document the noise level that you have? I mean, since you're already going to be doing that, and then coming back and, or maybe just sending it to staff for review and then further discussion? I, you know, I'm of two minds. I read the 1992 approval for the CUP, and that was a big concern. And, you know, again, we have some, you have some close neighbors, and then over on Clay Street, additional, a little bit farther away, I don't think they're gonna be as impacted. But, you know, back in the days when Cosmic Cafe had loud shows, you know, it definitely did escape the building. But do you think you'd be able to provide that information, like a six months?
If I purchase the equipment to read the decibels?
You know, you can, I think you can do it with a smartphone.
Yeah, there's free apps on your phone. I just did it for my PD sound machine.
Would you be willing to do that?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I say sure because I feel confident that I'm gonna set the speakers at a level, and I'm gonna control that level.
And it would also give us a chance to revisit it, and if it's onerous, if you can't meet it, if it's not satisfactory, then we can open up that for discussion. Our, you know, our real concern is sound escaping the envelope of the building. So that would be, that's our real concern, you know? People don't want to hear really loud music. They can avoid it, earplugs, whatever. But we want you to, you know, you want your bands to feel like they're being heard and people to enjoy the sound and so on.
Okay, this will be a discussion, and we bring it back for a discussion because this is kind of triggering all kinds of questions for me. Additional questions of the applicant? Is there, Commissioner Smith?
Yes, it's just about the structure. Because you mentioned you're gonna have to have, you've got an historic architect working on your project, is that right?
No, no, I'm having a heck of a time finding one that will even work with me.
What kind of mortar did you use when you made the repairs? Does it-
We used, we used-
Cement?
We used a modern mortar.
Okay.
A modern-
Reason I say that is because Fountain Tolman, another water bottling plant, had a special mason come in, and the report was that you have to use a certain kind of compound that was used in the 1800s. Because when you match that with modern cement that's used now, it won't work. Something about the chemistry between those two, it doesn't work.
The bonding components.
And I just remember from years ago, there were big gaps in the stonework, particularly up at the top. And remember, every engineer consulted for the Herick Building said it could not be saved, everyone. But the current owners got an engineer who had an experience in mining and did it, but said while they were in the process of reinforcing and adding the steel beams, do not use a jackhammer in the area, it'll fall apart. Have you thought about the implications of what happens on the Clay Street project? If they start changing the cedar venee that runs underneath and do the heavy kind of construction?
I have, I haven't been aware of any kind of construction that would, might be detrimental to the building. This is the first I've heard of, if any work being done to Clay Street.
I looked at the kind of restrictions put in 1992, and they were pretty tough. Things like 100 pounds per square foot, and that's not necessarily talking about dancing.
Correct. And we're still looking to meet those requirements before I can move forward.
Okay, all right.
That's part of the testing, that I'm looking for that historical architect to come to the building and do a load test on the live, a live and a load test on the floor, and also to inspect the pockets from the ceiling joists into the mortar for safety purposes, for wear, those types of things.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leopard, do you have any questions of the applicant or?
I think they've been answered.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. We encourage you to stick around. There may be additional questions.
If I could add anything that might be helpful? We've had this music in the building now for about six months because I've been working on it since last August. And I am friends with one of the gentlemen that lives in the mining camp right behind me.
Okay.
He actually wants to work for me, and he's never heard my music, not once.
Wow, okay, great.
I've had, and I, when we first set everything up, because I got some pretty good stuff, right? When we first set everything up, I did a sound test. I wanted to know, you know, what this thing will do. So I turned it up to 75%, and we couldn't talk to each other. It was so loud, right? I went to the Empress next door and talked to CJ. She goes, I never even heard the radio. So it's very well insulated building.
Yeah, that's good.
I really think we're gonna be respecting everyone's privacy and, you know, not being too noisy to the surrounding area.
Excellent.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address this project? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. A question that comes up to me, and to staff, actually, is it, anything before 10:00 PM? I'm not sure what the code is. I mean, you know, even in the residential neighborhood, you can be making noise until about 10:00 PM, right? Then it becomes a nuisance. I mean, I suppose if you're really obnoxious, it's an issue. But I mean, but in general, you can have noise up until curfew, is that right?
That's correct. Typically, after 10 o'clock, if somebody's making excessive noise, then they're a nuisance and subject to having the PD knock on your door.
Okay. So then after 10:00 PM, what do we have in terms of code, in terms of noise or deci- you know, we have to quantify it in terms of decibels or whatever. And is there a different, there may not be a difference between commercial and residential, but obviously I'm focused on commercial at this point. I mean, is there, are there any guidelines or code specificity for commercial entertainment venues after 10:00 PM?
We do not have any specific decibel readings outside of a building in a commercial area other than if it is past the hours and it's found to be excessively loud by a reasonable person. It's typically the way, you know, it's very sort of subjective, that then it can constitute a nuisance, and they have to turn it down.
Okay. I mean, I, again, living in the neighborhood of outbreak, I mean, there were often, 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 I didn't have to go down there to listen to music. I could just sit on my back deck, and I could listen to the music, have a beer. I mean, it was, and after 10, it was pretty loud. So that kind of gets to my condition 10, which I, you know, now I'm looking at it. I'm thinking I would want to strike condition 10. And I don't know how other commissioners feel. To me, it's kind of like the market will dictate, you know, I don't want to go there. It's way too loud, right? That kind of thing. And not all applicants, you know, we can't rely on the applicants to always be as considerate or into it as this applicant is, but I don't think we should be putting in a requirement. The only requirement, and-
Yeah, the CUP runs with the land, you know, and-
Right, correct.
In the event that you no longer own the property, and the next owner comes in, and they still have the right to the use that is conditioned here. So that's an interesting point you make.
The only, the only, it's not explicit in the staff report. I would just want to make sure that there's a restriction on modifying the Sotowork sign or the Pearson sign. Those are really historic. So I want to make sure those are preserved, something. Those aren't otherwise modified. That'd be the only thing I'd want to see happen with the application. Other than that, I'm absolutely satisfied with what the applicant wants to do.
And I think it's important to note that, you know, if there is an issue with a neighbor, there's already recourse avenues in place. If they have complaints, noise complaints and otherwise, they could go to the owner or they could go to the city. Those already exist. And so I'm with you in agreement for striking that noise restriction completely from the conditions of approval and just relying on existing rules that already govern.
What do you think about having the applicant monitor and report to us?
He seemed to be amicable to it. I don't see any problem.
I think it would be interesting, especially if there were any noise complaints, then-
It would be actually a layer of defense for the-
And his data, yeah.
But that's gonna be voluntary, right? It's not gonna be a condition of approval?
That was gonna be my suggestion when I read the packet, when I read the 1992 minutes. That was their suggestion. I thought it was a reasonable suggestion.
A six-month review?
Yeah, because I think instead of putting the hammer down and saying, you're gonna be loud, then, because I would like them to be able to, you know, open the windows and have some music play during the day, not at night, you know? I think it's a reasonable expectation that at 10:00 PM or whatever it is, whatever is in line with what we agree, that that would be the time when the music would really be contained. But on a lovely spring afternoon, being able to have some music or something upstairs, I think is good and shouldn't be completely limited in the venue because I think that that is appealing. And I do really support this project as it is presented. And I agree that restricting them to the 85 decibels, especially when reading what that equals out to. I mean, the DJed school is a school dance, so middle schoolers, you know, are listening to 95, but we're saying that we can't listen to that upstairs. So I would be at least in favor of raising that decibel amount, if not, if we don't- be at least in favor of raising that decibel amount, if not, if we don't, if we eliminate it, that's fine too, but I definitely am in favor of going higher on it for the ability to just function as necessary and as needed, and that was pretty much my only point, I think it's a great use, a great idea, and not just for kids, my husband is going to love it, so you, I think you were really thoughtful about the updates for your access and safety that you've done, clearly you have put a lot of time, effort, and I'm sure money into all of the updates that you are, have listed here, and I think that they're a really great thing for the longevity of that building, which is very important, so thank you for your thoughtfulness in that, but I agree, I would be in favor of either eliminating or raising that decibel, and adding the historic signage in the front of the building shall remain intact, those are my thoughts, and I'd be happy with a comeback in six months, I don't think it's harmful, but, you know, and if there's no...
Well, and this all depends on being able to get the second floor operational with the lifts and everything else, I mean, it's...
And that does present the...
I have hope and faith there, yeah.
So, would you be willing to eliminate, limping me sure I'm clear on where the commission's going, eliminate the wording in number 10, or...
Eliminate 10 altogether.
I'd be in favor of eliminating it altogether.
And would you be willing to replace it with applicant to monitor decibel levels of performances for six months after occupancy, and submit to, and submit to staff for review, or submit to planning commission for review?
I hate to have them to come back to us.
What level?
The problem is, you don't know how long after occupancy they're actually going to get anything going on in there, right, so, you know, you go six months, et cetera, et cetera, honestly, I am, since everything else we do in the city really is based upon its complaint generation, I would be much happier to not provide any restrictions on this, and then just let it go, and then if they get too loud, they're going to be notified, and the city's going to come and say, "You're too loud, you're going to have to turn it down."
Is that true?
That is true.
Okay, so if the, so if the city receives, or police department responds to complaints, then that comes to development services, you would come back to planning commission to have us modify the CUP? Or do we need to specify that that would happen?
We could do that, but if they're a nuisance, we could just have them turn the music down, we don't have to come to the commission.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, protecting the public...
Disturbing the peace, if the music's too loud, I can recall the music venue back in the 90s, early 90s, when that was approved, we, there were complaints about the music being too loud, because the windows were open.
Right, and so I just want to make sure the city, without us putting, specifying a condition, the city has the authority to have the music turned down without us modifying the CUP?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I'm comfortable with that, then.
Excellent.
So, I think we should just completely strike number 10, since we're, the public is protected, you know, to that, from that excess noise.
Yeah, and those procedures are already in place with the city, the protection for the public is already there, if there's complaints.
Right, that's, that's what's important. My last concern with hours of operation.
Right, go ahead.
2:00 a.m., that, to me, seems to be the quiet end of our central business district, I'm a little uncomfortable with 2:00 a.m., you know, I understand that we want the market to drive this, and it could be that if folks just, if the business isn't there, they will, of course, close, you know, honestly, a lot of businesses close by about 9:30 on...
Roll the sidewalks up.
Yeah, except for, you know, the, we have the Liner's Bench, we've got the Green Room, probably a couple other places stay, will, open a little bit later, but that's because they have the patrons, how do the rest of you feel about that 2:00 a.m. closing?
Well, I'm thinking if we're trying to, if we would hope to increase the vibrancy of Main Street and moving up through Main Street where the Independent is, and where the distillery's going, and then up in, into Broadway, I, I don't mind having it, again, if they're not a nuisance, right?
So, again, the complaint-driven problem.
It comes back to being a nuisance, and I can tell you, there've been more than one occasion when I've wished there was something open beyond 9:30, you know, it's like, the sidewalks are already rolled up, can we have a little bit more activity?
And, yeah, I don't know if that's...
Going back to Grass Valley.
Because, you know, they close, they say they close, or because, you know, you and I are up a little bit later than others.
Right.
Maybe there's not the market, but...
Right, yeah, and the market will drive it, and, you know, again, Grass Valley, after coming out of a musical show, there's a lot of places that are still open, 11, 12 o'clock at night, and I, if the applicant wants to do that, and think there's a market for it, and I actually think there is, then I wouldn't want to get in the way of them doing it, again, if the business is well, if it's not a nuisance, then let them do it, if it's a nuisance, we're going to know about it, and the city's going to...
And it is the CBD, it's not, I mean, just because it's closer to residential down there, it's not what the city has drawn and defined, zoned as CBD.
That's absolutely right.
Central bit, yes.
Chair Friend, if staff could just add a comment, typically, we do not impose hours of operation on a business, unless there's a legitimate concern about hours of operation beyond some time becoming a nuisance to surrounding land uses, and if it does become a nuisance, we would either come back to modify the conditional use permit, or it'd be other means to stop the excessive noise, or that kind of thing.
Where did California go with bars being open until 4:00 a.m.? I can't remember where that went, I guess that died, that didn't happen yet.
It's in New York.
Yeah, okay, and then what about preservation of Sotoworks and Pearson? I would really like some language that preserves those, so...
Yeah, if staff could comment on that as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
This building is on the state and national register of historic places, if they were to amend or change the historic nature of the exterior of that wall, they would have to come before us for approval, so the conditional use permit isn't a site plan review, so it's really looking at the operation, and not the building itself.
Okay, all right.
It's staff would...
That's technically outside of the realm of the CUP, then.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, okay, Commissioner Lepa? I'm ready.
Feel ready?
Chair is ready.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record, that we find that the conditional use permit and site plan review requests are exempt from environmental review, that we make the following findings in support of conditional use permit 24-01 for the operation of a place of entertainment within the central business district zone, as described on page six and seven of the staff report, and that we conditionally approve CUP 24-01 located at 594 Main Street, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval, included in attachment one of the staff report dated February 6, 2024, the conditions of approval shall be amended to remove condition number 10, restricting the level of indoor noise, and I think that's it.
I have a motion duly made.
I will second that.
And duly seconded, discussion on the motion, Commissioner Keaney, do you have a...
No.
Okay. No discussion, seeing none, call to question, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepa?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Great, the motion carries five to zero, of course, there is a 10-day appeal process by member of the community, other than that, thank you for your project, good luck to you, and hope it all works out well, then we'll just continue on, item 11, continued items, we have none, item 12, new business, we have none, item 13, matters from commissioners and staff, 13-1 staff reports.
Thank you, Chair, staff has nothing to report out unless there's any specific questions that the commission may have of any ongoing projects, I just want to go ahead and let you know that I did get a note that Al, the owner of the restaurant that we had the outdoor dining, he basically had to work alone at his restaurant, and he said, "Yes, the ABC license is approved for the outdoor dining."
Oh, great, thanks, Al, somebody got to him, that's good, all right, that's helpful to us and the staff, too, I think, appreciate that. Kristen?
We will not be having a meeting on February 20th, and we will also not be having a meeting on March 5th, it is the primary elections, this room is occupied.
Oh, we're on vacation.
So, we will not, we will not meet until the 19th of March.
And then the chair will note that I will be out of country then, so I will not be available for the 19th, okay, all right, thank you so much for that, 13-2, planning commission matters, we'll start with 13-2-1, special committee report, any updates from our special historic committee?
Especially in light of the no meetings for the next month, I don't think that we have anything to update, and then with you not being here for March 19th, I think we're going to push everything off until you get back, because I don't want...
Let me, let me, if you, if you will have a product ready by the 19th, let me ask my other commissioners if they want to go ahead and have that brought forth, so, you know, you aren't delayed, and your work is recognized, so I'll leave that up to my fellow commissioners.
I certainly would.
Sure.
Whatever works for the committee and the timeline.
Okay, great.
Something is going to need a bit of review, it's not a, just a kind of...
Absolutely, here you go.
A quick summary.
Yeah, so I could envision it would come, it will, you're going to, it might agendize it for action, you can do one of two things, you can either introduce it under 13-2-1 as a special committee report, here it is, and it would be on then the following meeting for actual action by the commission.
I think that was...
So, maybe we could do that.
See if you guys have full...
I don't think we would be prepared, you know, to take action.
Right, so we can get it out, and then it'll become part of the public record, here's a document, and then subsequent to that, going into April or whenever, then we have it agendized for action.
Exactly, then, right, then it becomes part of that agenda packet for the next meeting, yes, I think that's, if you're, if you're ready, certainly, we don't want you to rush on the product, so...
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Does that work for you, Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you, okay, any other information or suggestions from commissioners?
I just had one request for staff, some time ago, we, the commission approved a project for EID headquarters for that, I think it's a battery backup, and they were supposed to improve, their landscaping fell in disrepair, and I drive by there daily, and there's, I see flags, and obviously irrigation needs to be fixed, and it's just make a request to maybe do a follow-up, and if you can get an answer for when, what they're going to do to improve the look of that headquarters building.
Particularly in light of the rate increase.
Staff has actually met with EID, we met with the team, gosh, was that December? It may have been in December, they have a plan, they're strategizing, and we went over the landscaping plan that was approved, there were three phases, and they are strategizing, and the front area, front parking area will be addressed first, so, no timeline yet.
Thank you for letting me know that you're on it, and, yeah, you know, infrastructure's a very expensive plant, plants are not cheap, but, you know, I realize that they've got a lot of things that they, they have to take care of, so we have, you know, clean water and services, but, you know, we, we need to all be, work together on this, thank you.
Yeah, if I may just add a little bit, we did meet with EID staff, and we got into the weeds, so to speak, and I guess there's, there's an issue with the soil, so some of those areas, we were able to observe the plants, they seem to die, so there's something in the soil that isn't amenable to growing of the plants.
And there's also a terrible drainage on the east side, so, yeah, I mean, they've got challenges, but...
They do.
Yeah.
But I wanted to let you know that we were really looking at a lot of landscaping, why some areas are doing well, the plants are doing well, and some areas they weren't, obviously, it seems like there's some constituent in the soil that is not...
Well, that's not, that's not the first use that that area has had, so, yeah, no telling what kind of contaminants it might be.
Right, that was the terminus of the Standard Gauge Railroad, and so there were a lot of storage tanks, different things, could be some hydrocarbon or some other contaminants in the soil, but I...
Oh, my goodness, we have a super site.
When, when the Park and Ride went in, and a lot of that project happened, there was, there was soil testing, and there was some kind of remediation that was done to ameliorate that contamination of hydro...
Yeah, the Park and Ride, you know, those plants have succeeded, the London Plains that were there, now removed because of the improvements, but they, they thrived, so hopefully EID can do the same thing, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner, any other commissioners? We are adjourned.